Whoever. I'll be a disembodied voice.
Alrighty. At six thirty, we will begin our Adrian City Commission work study session for January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
President.
Mr. Help.
President.
Mr. Roberts.
President.
Mr. Miller.
President.
Mr. Strayer.
President.
Mr. Castleberry.
President.
Mr. Gower.
President.
All commission members present.
At this time, I will turn it over to the city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So at a pre-meeting, I don't believe it was our last one, I think it was your one prior to that, we discussed the possibility of finding a site for Mammoth Distilling, who is looking for an additional facility in our area. We talked about terms on which that might be provided to them. We identified the five acre lot, nominally five acre lot that we have in our former industrial park down off of two twenty-three as a potential site. It turns out that that is too small for their needs, but Will Sadler and I went out with Chad Munder, who's online tonight for Mammoth Distilling, to the Whit Farm north of town and looked at that property with him and I think he was quite interested in that site up to about twenty acres of that site. So this afternoon, I just sketched out what twenty acres might look like there. And you will recall, we own other land that is north of what you see depicted there on the screen. But this is kind of the prime part of the site. The woods, we own a lot of woods down to the river there as well, and in fact, on both sides of the river, which are contiguous to some of our other properties and might be of interest for a park-like setting in the in the future. But what happens on the on the north side of it is that there's a pretty severe rock right about where you see that that the south property line on the on the satellite image there. And so there's an upland area of woods, but then it begins falling off pretty severely towards the river at a certain point, and that land there would no longer be developable. So I wanted to check in with you again today, given that we weren't specifically talking about this site when we talked about it before, and make sure you're still all on board. Chad's very interested in seeing what a term sheet might look like with this property. And so I wanted to go over that with you tonight before we actually put that stuff administrative. Reviewing some of the terms I think would be important. Yeah, I think we're talking about a nominal purchase price, as we talked about before. Our goal is not to make money on the sale of land. Our goal is to see land developed and generate tax base for the city and Chad is talking about, correct me if I'm wrong when I get done here, but I think he's talking about initial construction phase of fifteen thousand square feet with additional storage buildings beyond that. And his timeline for that is quite aggressive. He wants to be open in twenty twenty-four with that facility. And so I thought we could incorporate terms like that into a development agreement. Basically, the idea would be as long as you develop very quickly and put value on the property in a short period of time within the timeframe that is anticipated, then the purchase price is nominal. If not, then we'd either have to claw the property back or it would convert to a market value of purchase price at that point. I would envision that it would go through the normal planning zone and construction review processes, though we would commit as part of the deal to expedite it going to the greatest extent feasible. And then we have to, you know, this is greenfield development. There's no infrastructure inside the site that is available on M fifty-two. And so it would be clear from the terms that the purchaser is responsible for bringing the infrastructure that they need into the site and then also not isolating up from the infrastructure in terms of our use of the remaining property that they were acquired. So that's kind of where I think we're at. I'll ask Chad if he wants to to inject anything that I might have missed or say anything he would he would like to say to the city commissioners. You're on mute right now, but there you go. Still muted. You're muted, Chad.
There we go. Sorry about that. Thanks, Greg, for your time last week and everyone for including me in the working session tonight. As Greg mentioned, you know, strong family ties to Adrian. We've been looking for opportunities to to do more business in Adrian for quite some time now. And we are, this is a business that is going to happen. We've already got over a million dollars invested in equipment right now. That equipment is scheduled to deliver in fourteen months. So there's an opportunity in the distilling market right now to take advantage of, but it is a little bit time sensitive. So we are anxious and appreciate your your willingness to talk to us quickly here. And fully committed to Adrian just because it's an ideal spot to be growing in the business and for family reasons. The 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 industrial park site was too small mostly because there's no room to grow and we do have some, you know, we hope the business thrives and we will have considerable storage requirements, which will be just industrial storage requirements. But the greenfield site on at the Whit Farm seems ideal. And so everything Greg said is true. We have been looking into Comsey and Battle Creek as alternative sites. They both have greenfield and infrastructure projects going on that are similar to what you are offering here. But Adrian is our clear preference if we can get it done. But the ability to get it done quickly is very important and a key to our decision making here ultimately about where we locate. So this looks like a spot that could really work. And it offers some opportunities to work with Adrian College, which we think is beneficial to them and us, and it makes the whole project more appealing. And would like to be able to bring them in this as well. So make this not only an industrial facility, but one that has a strong educational component as well that we're excited about. So.
Thanks, Chad. You bet. Commissioners, any discussion, any concerns with the direction we're going?
Perhaps Chad can ask, but I'm interested in hearing about the employment that the facility would bring.
He had to do probably initially about half dozen people, Chad, is that right? Back to mute there again, Chad.
Yeah, the answer is it always depends on how much you automate. The facility will take six to twelve people per shift to operate. And we anticipate running twenty-four hours a day. So twelve to twenty-five people kind of minimum. And then there are other opportunities as well. If we can run some educational programs out of there, I think that jumps up by another five to ten people, which we certainly would be interested in doing. So I doubt you'll ever see more than fifty people, but I think somewhere between twenty-five and fifty is a fully operational facility out there. You bet.
That's where I'm at is that, again, it's when it comes to selling property or giving property way for development, that whole site was bought to expand the tax base, you know, reasoning when the commission made that decision years ago, way before my time, but you know, having a strong development agreement to protect us when it comes to making sure that something's actually developed on that site. You know, you remember the hotel, I did not support that project years ago because there was no development agreement and we sold the land for a dollar. I wanted to ensure that the city would be able to get, you know, a hotel or market value for the property. So I'm excited, I'm humbled to be thought of Adrian. They already have a significant investment in downtown. But to have that facility there, I think that when you start developing that site, I think that once a good reputable company comes in, it can hopefully have a nominal effect with the rest of the site, so.
What's the total acreage of the whole, outside of twenty acres?
The whole thing is about a hundred and seven acres, but a lot of that is trees, but whatever. There's probably not, you know, another similar module of land, although more oddly shaped.
I personally like the aggressive and optimistic approach. I like that they're ready to go, they're interested, they're really and are excited about Adrian. I think this is the strike while the iron is hot kind of approach. I think that's a good idea.
I'd also like to say we may be able to put some of that other acreage into agricultural production while you look for another industrial tenant. So that is farmable land. We are actually using, we're trying to grow all the grain we're going to use in that facility in Lenawee County. So we're making a significant investment in in growing partners as well. It'll be millions of millions of pounds of grain bringing onto market right now. So that site is growable and it's possible that we could lease that while you look for other development opportunities and grow some novel grains there. It might have an agro tourism twist to it as well. And would make the facility more compelling for the industry, just.
Well, while you're speaking of that, Chad, I think it was interesting what you do with your with your spent grain as well, if you would share.
Sure. So the goal is to feed, to turn all that spent grain into distillers, distiller spent grain into cattle feed. So Lenawee County has the advantage of having lots of dairy cattle in the in the area, which makes it another compelling reason to be in in Lenawee County at least. Very, very difficult for a lot of other distillers at this scale to find a a nice green way to get rid of this, but either an anaerobic digester or feed or a combination of those two things is what we'll use to handle this spent grain. So it's another opportunity for local farmers to benefit from a byproduct of our manufacturing process. And there's also there's also an evolving compost market. I think in the next three to five years, you'll see a lot of distillers grain actually being sold as an element of a commercial compost, which just makes the whole operation stronger.
I have a question, Chad. So you're talking about a fifteen thousand square foot distillery, okay? And then with other buildings, would those other buildings be for aging product or would it be for storing grain or, you know, what would they be used for? And how many do you imagine having initially right off of, you know, in the next year or two?
So those other structures would be used for storing an aging whiskey. The facility would be built with the intent of selling most of the, this is a distillery that will make whiskey on a business-to-business contract basis primarily. We'd not be trying to sell it by the bottle out of there, so there won't be a lot of bottling going on there. You're making whiskey, putting it in barrels and aging it. The business plan is to age it about four years before it moves off-site to purchase to contract buyers. And at somewhere between forty and fifty thousand barrels a year. So you'd look for a storage building that could handle one year's worth of production at a time and have four buildings ultimately. So by twenty twenty-nine, fifteen thousand square feet of of production of actually distillery, and then three to four buildings that could handle aging capacity, and you'd cycle them out. You'd empty one out and and put a fourth year back in there and rotate it one year at a time. And those buildings, it depends on how tall you build them. They're pole barns, right? They're climate-controlled pole barns. So there's not, they're not structurally complex, but they're rather large. So you can make a decision about how tall you want to go. About twenty-four feet is about as tall as typically you build those.
Would those would those pole barns be set back further from the road and then the distillery is up close to the road and I guess I'm trying to imagine a first impression as somebody's driving into Adrian.
Absolutely. The way I imagine, and we're totally flexible, you know, obviously happy to talk about where you'd like things located. It does make sense off the top of my head to put the storage back by the the trees and the production facility closer to the road where you need the the infrastructure anyway. Honestly, the water and sewer connections are close. You want to minimize the lengths there. And the facility will be built to have curb appeal. So we do want to brand it. We will put some glass on it so that you can see the actual distilling equipment from the road. People tend to leave those things lit up at night. They're visually appealing and interesting. So if you've seen pictures of our facility here in northern Michigan, you know, they're quite modest in relative terms, but good-looking steel structured, you know, engineered steel buildings with a little branding on them, a sign, and then a lit up space in the front that would draw people's attention to it. We do want to make something that people want to look at here. And then there will be, so there will be silos. So all the grain we use, we bring in on a daily basis. So there'll be four to six small, like twelve-foot diameter silos that you fill from trucks daily. They come in and out. So you'll see twice a day trucks coming in and out to unload and unload grain and spend grain. But it's very modest in terms of its presence visually.
Great. How's that parcel zoned currently?
It's sort of unzoned. It shows up on the zoning map as a planned unit development, but no one currently associated with the city seems to know where that area plan is or what it ever consisted of. So we treat it as unsolvable and have to dome to the zone that would accommodate the use of it.
Earlier today, I asked Mr. Goode to take a look at the charter, you can, how it addresses the sale of property, both real and otherwise. He's taken a look at it. There was some language in the charter that talked about having to publish.
I think that's in the code, not chart.
Okay, the code. Okay, wherever it is. But I think he's got an opinion that says that's not necessarily the case in this.
Right. The charter controls is pretty much what the charter says. It's five votes in the city commission.
Exactly.
Both by.
Super majority. That's fine. I just wanted that clarification, so if somebody else come back later questioning what we've done.
I do have a question, and I brought it up the last time. So visiting rick houses in Kentucky, are there any issues with the black fungus creeping into any of that river down there, the trees? Is that a Kentucky-only kind of fungus, or is that a Michigan thing that we will want to know about?
So black mold is a is an issue.
Oh, it's a, I don't know what it's called, but it's not that. Yeah, sorry.
Right. It is a fungus. It is related to the production of alcohol and storage of alcohol. In Kentucky, you tend to see more of it. So climate-based, so not having winter kill with that that particular fungus is a problem for people in Kentucky. They also tend to hold on to product much longer. So that fungus tends to grow more and heavily aged barrels that are starting to empty through evaporation. So there will, there will be some, this is something you always were climate controlling those spaces. It's not, it's not a thing that can be that can be eliminated entirely, but it isn't never a I've never, we've never had any documented problem with it and I, it doesn't have any particular smell or cause any, it will not leach into the river. It won't be something that gets into the soil or the water. It really is a an aesthetic thing partly and a smell thing if it gets to a very, very large, become a very large issue in a very large storage space. But relative to, if you've been to Kentucky and on the Bourbon Trail, those rick houses are three to four times the size of what we're talking about. So even though this is a relatively large industrial process for Michigan, it's a tiny one in compared to what you're used to seeing down there. So this would be the largest operating continuous still in the state. So it is that, but like, we've never had, we don't have any issue in our production now, and I don't know of any other craft distillers in the state of Michigan that have had an issue with with the black fungus in terms of having to remediate against it. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't imagine we will here either, but we could certainly investigate with the health department. Certainly, we will in DEQ as we go on here.
I really like that we are moving away from the homes that we're going to be running up against on the west side of the town. Stated in my last time, I've been very concerned about having this development in my backyard if I was one of those homeowners. I think this development is a better placement than where we were looking before.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll proceed to, I don't know, throw the term sheet in short order and hopefully have a resolution for you maybe by the next, your first meeting in February. Chad, I'll be in touch.
Thanks very much, everyone. It's a pleasure to be in with you and we appreciate your considering the the opportunity for us. We're excited about it.
Thank you, Chad.
Take care.
I think it will be necessary to have a special meeting of the planning commission to accelerate this thing through the process.
I kind of have to think through the timeline as it relates to the zoning piece, but possibly. Maybe we got to look at what the notice requirements are. Now, that's all I had scheduled for tonight. We are getting up on seven o'clock, so I'm trying to back you for a little while.
At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. Before the record, please state your name and address. We will start inside the chambers first, and then after that, we will open it up to Zoom participants. We're opening it up to Zoom participants if there are any or public comment. Hearing no public comment, may I get a motion? May I get a motion to adjourn?
So move, support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned and we will begin our regular meeting at seven AM. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Help.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
Mr. Gau.
Present.
All commission members present.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd request that we move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. Item CR twenty-three dash zero zero nine from the police department.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the removal of CR twenty-three dash zero zero nine from police? The resolution to award a bid for upfitting of two patrol vehicles to the regular agenda?
So move.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with removing CR twenty-three dash zero zero nine from the police department is approved by an all yes vote.
Under ordinances, we have a first reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero one, which is an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian zoning ordinance, Article Four, Section four point three two, certificate of occupancy required. This is a first reading only. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R twenty-three dash zero zero one is from administration. It is a resolution to authorize the expenditure of funds from the Riverview Terrace Response Fund to aid former residents with costs directly related to moving items from Riverview Terrace. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gau.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by an all yes vote.
Resolution CR twenty-three dash zero zero nine is from the police. It is a resolution to award a bid for upfitting of two patrol vehicles. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've got some questions I'd like to ask the chief. First, I apologize for my ignorance, but can you explain exactly what what's involved in upfitting the patrol cars?
Sure. Good evening. It's Emmer, Chief Police City of Adrian. As you can see from our list, we have quite a bit of things that get added to the vehicles, lights, sirens, controllers, there's a special wiring harness that controls all of that. Any of the police vehicles that are bid through the state bid come with special electric systems, alternators and that are much heavier duty, so that's not part of it. What we're asking the upfitters to do is to tie into that system with all of this equipment, and that's what's listed here. Also, part of that, the cage in the back, cage, for lack of a better term, the bench seat, the storage units in the back, the push bumper on the front that we have installed. Spotlights are standard. That's that's about it. The console pieces in the in the front hold the laptop, they hold the printer, that sort of thing. So all of that is individual. So this list looks like a lot, but some of these are actually pretty small things that all attach together to make make the whole.
So you're recommending a bid from Adrian Sign Shop, and I like nothing more than being able to shop locally. I see that there is an exception that they have for no rear cargo storage floor. Is that something that we anticipate adding after the fact? And if so, what do you anticipate the cost for that?
The storage floor, so in the rear of the vehicle, so if you think of a Tahoe, you've got the large space behind that wall. If if you look at the list, there's part of it that is a drawer that builds up and then the drawer pulls out. So there's a number of different products there, which which what we ran into with some of these vendors was bidding different different products, different companies. What we're envisioning is a single drawer base on the floor to pull out for your road flares, your your street cones, your traffic safety vests, that sort of equipment. So I don't I don't envision needing anything more than than what is bid here. We looked at putting in the cargo storage floor, which is a separate unit underneath that drawer. I think I think shortages are going to kind of steer what we can get in that regard. So no, I don't see any additional cost over and above that what's listed here.
Okay, where I'm trying to go with this is I see Era had upfitters had no exceptions, and I just want to make sure that whatever else we've got to do in addition to the bid, that it doesn't drive the bid. the bid, that it doesn't drive the bid up over what the one who took no exceptions would be. So.
Right.
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gau.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those reports? At this time, we will begin public comment. We will begin inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there's a three minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address. After we are done inside the chambers, we will open it up to Zoom participants.
Hello, McKenna Ramos, four twenty-two South Winter. I know it's been ages. So I have a couple of quick comments. One, thanks for the appointment. I definitely look forward to it and getting to work with these great people. Also, I'm very happy to see that there are signage in parks, especially the ones on the east. First, I saw the ones downtown, of course. But I'm happy to see they're around in the other parks as well. Just, it's great to see. And that's all I really have for you tonight.
At this time, we will open it up to Zoom participants. Hearing no more public comment, I will now open it up to commissioner comments. Commissioner Roberts.
Yes, I'd just like to take a few minutes and talk about the February first Fridays event. And I'm going to drag Michelle into this and she knows the details better than I do. But just so everyone's aware, we are trying something new this year. And maybe Jay, if you would be interested in getting up and talk, talking about what we're doing for first Fridays. I'd appreciate that.
Jay Marks, DDA Director. Yeah, so first Fridays, we're doing a fundraiser for, for first Fridays called Maple Frost. Will envision, will work with twelve participants raising funds for a charity of their choice as well as helping support some events for downtown Adrian. They will be jumping into icy cold water in a pool at the four corners. And so allow them to raise funds for that effort. You'll see several people, including our mayor, as one of the participants. And along with that, we'll have, we're going to have a scavenger hunt for local businesses for downtown to encourage people to go into their businesses and, and maybe learn something about those businesses at the same time.
My understanding, the chief of police is going to participate in that too.
Yes. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So move. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.